Good evening. Sorry. The RONI Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying your retrospect as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, RONI Post Office, Mary Vault School, Alliance Bangham School, Grace Downing School, and the RONI Public District, Public School District website. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members, please.
Mrs. Dare, Ms. Bebe, Mr. Buckheim, Ms. Davidson, Mr. Lego, Mr. Murray, Ms. Panzerella, Ms. Sams, Ms. Balding.
Here.
We have a call.
Officer Present Mark Ainucci, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Director of Curriculum Instruction. I also can't, I can't see everyone else's, everybody is here? Okay, so, thank you. Ms. Shee Gezzi, Principal of Bangham Downing School, Mr. Steve Peely, Principal of Vault School, Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal of Vault School, Mrs. Gladys Hubbard, Director of Special Education, and Mr. Frank Heinz, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on January 5th as well as the special meeting on January 12th, 2021. Motion made by Maria, seconded by Chaz. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Bebe, Mr. Buckheim, Ms. Davidson. I'm gonna keep saying Ms. Davidson only because she said she was gonna-
She's gonna pop in, yep, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Lego. Yes, to the 5th, abstain on the 12th. Mr. Murray. Ms. Panzerella. Ms. Sams. Ms. Balding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There are no presentations or correspondence at this time. Do we have any public comments on agenda items only?
If anyone has a public comment, you would just unmute yourself, identify who you are, and you would be able to speak to the board.
Alright, I don't hear any public comments, so we will move along to Mr. Ainucci and his superintendent's report, please.
Alright, good evening, everyone. Good to go? Good. District enrollment is holding study AR34 kids at 11, current out-of-district placements, some upcoming district events and planning things. Interest forms for the pre-K are due on March 8th, information was sent out. There is no lottery scheduled at this time for the pre-K 4. If one is needed, we will set that up for sometime in March. Kindergarten information packets are also posted online, and that orientation will take place later in the spring, obviously that'll be in a virtual format again. And we have reached out to our current pre-K students for that. If you do have a child, know a child who's five years old or before October 1st, and they're not enrolled in our pre-K 4 program, you'll need to complete the six registration forms listed on the flyer. All the information is pretty easy to find on the website. You can also pick up the registration packet at Bangham Downing, Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 2:30. If you have any questions, they can just reach out to the school secretaries, they can help you out. Programming for the budget is being done right now. I know Dr. McCarron loves this time of year, so we hope to have some more information. We'll probably have a committee meeting set up in the near future with the Finance Committee to review some of those things for the budget. No numbers have come out yet, you know, so we're not really sure what that'll look like, and we'll keep you posted on that. For our ESY and summer programs, I know some people have reached out with some questions. We are trying to plan something for the summer for ESY as well as for our Title I program and summer program, but we don't have a definite idea what that's gonna look like this year because of the restrictions we would have. And, so, we're trying to get our idea, rock our head around that, and there's some places that were pretty successful having some smaller summer programs last year, so we're gonna kinda piggyback off some of the things that they did, as long as we can keep it safe, but it's something we'd like to offer to some of our students at the least. Hopefully we have some more information at the March meeting, and we can start planning for that in the spring. As I said to the board last week, the NJSLA assessment has been postponed, has not been canceled. Again, state testing is mandated by the federal government, so until they tell the state something, we don't really have a cancellation at this point, but the postponement, for the most part, is a, is a step in the right direction regarding state testing. Expanding reopening guidance, as I was talking to some of the board members before the meeting started tonight, real quick, we are always looking for opportunities to increase our in-person instruction. We're gonna have a meeting come up this Friday with some members of our school community, a couple of our school board members, our administrative team, to look at some options moving forward this spring of getting kids back for more in-person instruction. We obviously still have to have that remote format available to all our students and families, which we will do, but if we can safely get kids back into school following the guidelines and under the guidance, again, we're still in a phase of yellow, which is good that we dropped down that CATT report, but there's still things we have to follow in order to do that safely for the students and their families. We are gonna send out a survey, preferably next week, to our families, get some interest on what they might wanna be thinking about coming up in the spring. If they wish to have their children remain on the remote schedule, that's obviously an opportunity for them to do that, but then also if we can get kids back in for more consistent in-person instruction, we'll do that as well. But again, everything has to be done safely. If and when that is going to happen, we're gonna have a member from the County Health Department will come out and tour all three school buildings to ensure that the setup that we have in place is safe for students and staff to come back. And hopefully we'll have some more information on that in, at our March meeting, and any additional updates, we'll always post on the website or anything like that. I appreciate people's patience and their cooperation. I know we have some more inclement weather coming up, scheduled for Thursday, so just keep an ear out if we have to make any decisions. We'd like to give that information out sooner to our families, so if the night before, if they're telling us it's not gonna look good for Thursday, there's a possibility we could shift to all remote instructional Thursday, but that has not been decided yet. Any questions?
Thank you.
When is the March meeting?
That's the next meeting, March 16th.
I'm only at the lobby, though. More information, I was just, that's it, so it's about a month away? And it's, what is, right, for it is, spring, for it is- For reopening, she said, what, you said spring, what can you define what you're-
We don't, we haven't had, we haven't set a time, a specific day or week yet, for the spring to open. I mean, I think spring is the third week in March, but, you know, that's just the official day of spring, I mean, spring, getting kids back in the springtime. And you and I had this discussion the other day, you know, briefly, if- Not tomorrow, as far as I understand.
Spring is Monday, everybody understands. Spring is Monday.
I definitely feel your concerns, as a parent myself, going through the same things.
We just need to make sure that we get that survey out and that people answer it and respond, so.
We've been getting a lot of positive feedback from our surveys lately, especially something I think of this importance, but again, some of the things that we are going to plan, we're gonna have to lock in more concrete information in for people who, you know, we, because we do have some families right now that are kinda going back and forth between remote and hybrid instruction, and we're gonna have to tighten that up a little bit, getting kids back in the springtime.
Well, you would have to tighten that up because we'd have to make sure that our numbers-
That's what I'm saying. That information, that will be stated very clearly in any correspondence that we have with our families.
So that way I don't get any phone calls at 8:00 AM? Or anyone's at 8:00 PM?
Alright. We meet with the County Health Department every Thursday at 1:00? Yes, yep.
Mark Howard? How long does it take you to get, get it about due inspection, or should that be something you should be scheduling now?
As a group, if people, their, 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 their staff is limited, so it would be something I'd like to, we plan that, and that's what we're gonna do, yeah. If you were to send it to the end of the place, you would want to hold up, um, actions on three levels, how, like, similar, so, we're not gonna, for our, things like that?
But we did, but we did put in, like, the air purifier, that we, we are, we do have other areas-
Yes. Yeah, we could expand, we could expand different things moving forward, yep, yep. And then when the, when the warmer weather comes later, that'd also be a benefit because we can get kids outside as well.
And my, we have, 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 we have,[712.22]
It, it'll be a thought-out process, not just something we, you know, throw together at the last second.
Any other questions?
Um, as Mr. Ainucci said, we're in the middle of budget preparation. Of course, there's not that much I can fully put together until we get our state aid numbers, which should be the last week in February. So, that'll be next week. So, once we get that, that's when everything starts happening in my office. I will be presenting the budget to the board at the March meeting. Usually, there aren't many changes that take place between the March meeting and then the April meeting. So, that will be presented in March, submitted to the county office, and then final approval will take place in April, as it always has. Questions have come up regarding summer programming, especially our before and after care summer programming. One thing that I've always, um, we've been able to support our summer camp through the money that we make in our before and after care program during the course of the school year. So, while we are hoping to offer something in the summertime, a camp opportunity for families, the one issue that we have is it has to be completely supported by our before and after care program. It cannot be supported by the district budget. So, with that being said, in prior years, we've been able to use money from our before and after care program to run things and at a significantly reduced cost than other programs, you might say. So, I just wanna make sure that, you know, once we do get those final ideas of what that's going to look like in the summer, the cost might look different because it might have to be priced out for us to be able to support the staffing that we have and to support the students that we're serving. So, it might look a little bit different this year. Hopefully, we will have something in place. But we're gonna have to figure out cost effectively. How, that won't put us in the red either. So, that information, we will have out, I, I would hope, no later than April, so that way, families are able to make decisions as far as what they're gonna do in the summertime with their students. As Mr. Ainucci said, state testing has been put on pause. People were getting ready to start, you know, access testing with their, you know, students. We will only start it next week. Unfortunately, at this time, we were told date to be determined, no sooner than April 5th. So, right now, the, everyone thinks that that's like a stall to figure out what they're actually gonna be doing. If they do state testing, they're gonna have to figure out how do you provide state testing to remote students? Because the state test questions are secure. They don't have enough questions to put them out remotely for fear that, you know, it, it, wouldn't give you the data that you were even looking for because it's not a contained or secure situation for setup. So, everyone feels like that's just them not wanting to announce things yet. They did announce that we no longer have to do student growth objectives this year for staff members, but we're waiting for that state, state testing thing to come out finally. Administration and myself have been looking over, and along with staff members, we've been looking at our curriculum across content areas just to see what programs we use within, within each area, what benchmarks are we using, what resources are we using to make sure that we're fully addressing each area. Over the summer, there are gonna be some changes that take place to the curriculum based on mandates from the state, and to make sure that all those things are updated. Also, we wanna do an inventory to see what programs are truly being used, what data are those programs providing us, and is it worthwhile? I know that sometimes, you know, there's great programs, but we can also over-assess students, and we're not really using the data for anything, but we're just assessing them for that purpose. So, we wanna make sure that everything we are doing with our students has a purpose and a backup with it, and that we're doing what's best interest to everyone involved. And that is all I have. Questions? Chaz?
I noticed, uh, the number seven, that they, there's, there's no discussion about social emotional learning. And the state would have a little bit of a corner. And that's still a big topic, and sorry, the duty of school boards. Hopefully, maybe at the next meeting, we'll take a look at that as well.
Number seven of my report, you're just huffing?
Yes.
So, the curriculum director, from the curriculum directors meeting is why you're just huffing. So, social emotional learning is a huge topic that's at the forefront of everything. However, in this moment, those meetings are very targeted in what is going on at that time period. So, right now, it's complete, you're in complete testing mode. And you're trying to make sure you're set up for assessments and getting your students tested, and how you're working with your teachers. So, in terms of that one piece, that was just the topic for that month. Social emotional learning has been a topic going across the entire year. That has been discussed. So, that's just the topic in this moment.
I have, I have a suggestion.
Yep.
I do know that, um, some of the parents that are getting beaten were, have already put it out there, have been asking questions about some of our options for their students. And I guess he just talked to us and told us about it. And he, he could, he could like a digital flyer and say like, information will be coming, working on it. I know that, you know, all your, it's, it's worth a little extra, like, some for kids. We wanted to have this, stay tuned, something like that. And I just put it on. I know that we've been sharing like soccer forums, and we've been sharing preschool forums, and kindergarten information, and it's just a good way to get it out to the community as well, if you could like just put something on our, like, we should, we'll, we should know by August, I mean, uh, this April. But you could just put something out there, because I do know this, that people were asking each other, and I did get asked as well. And I just wasn't really quite sure if we were possible to have that or not. But I would hope so, because-
And at this point, logistically, we're unsure with what that will look like, but we can absolutely put that together.
Yeah, like, I, I understand, and I, and I understand.
But just like an update, this is where we are currently, and we hope to have an answer by-
I also know that it may be more expensive that it wasn't the task due, the fact that we can't, but I understand, I'll have to, we're all not know that you'll do the best that you can for everyone in our community, but if you could just put like a little FYI.
How many people? And that would be the thing too, is we're gonna have to know, like, how many kids do we need for staffing? And what do we know for all those things? So, and that'll be how it gets worked out. Because the other piece too is like, when we look at summer programming, it's what grade levels and what grade spans are you putting together? And how many grade levels are you crossing over? What's appropriate, what isn't appropriate? Because then, you know, you have families that want their kids with kids in their grade level, or they don't want them mixed with other grade levels. And it goes back and forth. So, it does become difficult on that end.
Back when states were normal, two summers ago, we had a lot of parents who thought they had a topic for incoming kindergartners.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
So- Because we just opened a job for kids.
Really super young, and, you know, the middle school was already supposed to say, oh, Platter, no. So, not too many kids.
Correct, so. Hopefully, we'll be able to pass them here for programs back.
Any other questions? Okay. So, district reports were attached. Principals' reports, nurses', building and grounds', and special education reports. Did anybody have any questions on them? No, Mr. Giezi, I liked your picture. It made me smile. Picture on your report, your image this month. PTA report, any other community reports, committee reports, excuse me, that any, anyone has? Uh, go ahead, Chaz.
Uh, at the February 3rd, in place of the committee meeting, a lot, a lot is happening, but Dan did make an announcement. The commission has stepped aside from participating in putting together an esports program. The reason why is because it already exists. There's a group called the Garden State Esports League. They've been, this is their second year, Garden State Esports League. And they have it for junior high schools, as well as high school students. And what he said was, school districts that are interested in getting the, some students that are interested involved in this type of thing should contact that particular organization. He said, it's like revving the wheel. You know, they've got it together, it's working, they're in the second year. And other than that, that's it. There's no, nothing new happening, there aren't any new programs. They're gonna be up and at this time, because of financial reasons. Their funding has dropped off, so, what's going on, so, that's it.
Thank you. School Board is still offering a bunch of virtual trainings. I took advantage of a lot over the summer, so if you wanna check out that. And you said that we, you wanted to meet with the Finance Committee? Set something up for the Finance Committee before next, um, meeting? Before the day of, okay. Okay. So, looking out for that information on the Finance Committee. Anything else? Alright, so, new business then. Under property and transportation, I need a motion to approve, number one, facilities. Motion made by Dennis. Seconded by Angel. Any questions?
My, I, uh, I just have a concern with, um, approving the use of the field, like, we're not, we'll be back in school. And I'm, I'm speaking as a person who came out through the ROI, both the ROI, and all through the ROI. I'm, I'm looking a little bit funny for us to approve the use of the field, like, we're not using, having our children.
My, my, my question was, why aren't they using green acres or whatever?
And I don't, I don't wanna say, I'll, one, we use the field, and I'll, I'll vote that's the feeling, you use the field. I just think that you have to be conscious of how that appears, especially to some of the parents.
Or community and taxpayers?
Trying to balance everything, and, you know, we're not at school, but we didn't play on the field.
Well, that's what's happening, Mr. Murray. I know that you know that. But the students aren't coming to school full-time, but they're all playing extracurricular activities and hanging out.
Well, I, I agree, and I understand.
I agree with you, I agree with your statement too.
Why, what we approved is that we're saying that it's okay to play on the field, but it's not okay to come into the classroom. So, that's what we're approving. And that's why I have a problem.
Well-
Not a problem, a concern.
Well, I think it's a valid concern. Um, I think it's a valid concern too, but I think that from the discussion that we just had with Mr. Ainucci, I don't wanna speak for everyone on the board, but I, I know your opinion about reopening schools, and my opinion is the same. Um, and then, I know that Angel, and Barbies, and Chaz, that's five members here who want the schools open. We want the schools to reopen. So, um, hopefully, the week after this starts, we'll have a plan at our next meeting on the, on the 16th to get that happening as soon as possible, like Barbie wants, spring. My, my, my concern when I saw this, when I read this on Friday, my concern was, wait a minute, we just redid all them fields and green acres. Why are they using our field?
The younger agents, they're not so used green acres, but for the older boys, they use, oh, because they can't use-
I mean, I don't want to be allowed.
A lot of them are not.
And they used to use trinkets, and I guess trinkets not letting them.
And again, I don't want, we're doing the field. I just have to be conscious of how the pure field- Exactly, and you have to be not, you know, how the year is a solid catch, and chime in on some of the earlier meetings about, you know, I have to send myself to daycare, because I think I'm in the school. But now we're saying, well, we can go play soccer to one of the schools.
Well, and then, you have to remember that a large part of our community don't have children. But they know that their tax dollars are going towards funding the schools, and the schools aren't open, but the soccer team is playing on, because they don't know that it's law by A, if you're driving by. So, it's an extremely valid point.
It's starting prior to our next meeting, so.
It is starting prior to our next meeting, but-
And again, I'm voting to do this, you know, valid, but I just think we'd be aware. I think much of as far as the first one.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call. I'm sorry.
They use the thing, uh, eyelines as the rest of us, correct?
Yes.
Do they still have to do whatever they need to do for what they're saying?
Like temp checks and things like that? Yeah, it's just like, your son plays football, like, just like he had to every day.
Well, they have us, they have-
But she, but-
Parents on one side, one, the other team, and you're just like that. Obviously, layers, like, different, or whatever call. But so far, they did have, had to do all that stuff. But we did split teams a little bit.
No, I'm sure they, I'm sure they're following protocols, but what, the point that, that Dan makes is extremely valid. Yeah. But our, our children play sports too, but we have to follow protocols, so. And I'm sure they will here too. The ROI knows all the protocol, they'll make sure it's done. Roll call.
Miss Beebe. Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Miss Panzarella.
Yes.
Miss Sims. Miss Balding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through seven. Motion made by, excuse me, Chaz. Alright, seconded by Dan. I just was, I didn't mean to laugh, but I just, we're approving baseball and softball coaches for the, for the, for the spring, so, I just wanted to know if you wanted to make any other comment. Same point, same comment. Okay, I, that's why, I didn't mean to laugh, but I just, alright. Any other questions or comments? Alright, roll call.
Miss Beebe. Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Miss Panzarella. Miss Sims. Miss Balding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Under finance, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through nine, eight and nine were added today. Um, that's just the preschool, approving the submission of the 21-22 preschool program plan and 21-22 preschool program budget. So, I need a motion for items one through nine, please. Motion made by Dennis. Seconded by Angel. Any questions there? Roll call.
Miss Beebe. Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Miss Panzarella. Miss Sims.
This fault.
This fault.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Curriculum, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through three. Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Angel. Any questions? Roll call.
Miss Beebe. Mr. Buckheim.
Yes.
Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Miss Panzarella.
Yes.
Miss Sims. Miss Balding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Policy and public relations, it was a busy month for policies. I need a motion to approve items numbers one and two, please. Motion made by Angel, seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Miss Beebe. Mr. Buckheim. Mr. Lego. Mr. Murray. Miss Panzarella. Miss Sims. Miss Balding.